Check, check, check.
I have to tell you, I mean, because I live at the rural, it was obvious that they take people from South Texas to the city. Like, that was one of my favorites, like, because the comments are just priceless.
I mean, everyone should experience it. You need to go experience it some point. I'm just like, man. It was like, I was six flights. We were in Jersey Island, you know, I'd always volunteer to go to the park and dairy place, but outside Buffalo, they're like, why? Buffalo sucks. I'm like, yeah, they suck people. I'm like, I get it. See better Buffalo.
You got an eye for on the way.
Hi.
I'm here to stand for the workshop.
Yep.
Shake some hands if that's okay.
How many times do I skip?
I'm nervous.
They're real nice and fruity, they.
I see you all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see you driving around.
Yeah, I'd like to go outside for a mile for running the, you know, just right behind this.
No, no, I just wanted to say.
I could yell at things for an hour.
We need one more for four.
What did you say?
One more. So we need one more for four.
Uh, yeah, if you want to have it. So if you want to have it. I mean, technically, yeah, you can still have it, but you'd have to, like, not deliberate and everything, but, yeah.
Call to order the KCDC workshop agenda, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, five P M. Item one, call to order. Item two, invitation address to board. No one signed up. Item three, discussion items, budget, three A budget workshop.
This is a point in order.
Ryan, do you want us to start? Do you want me to start? How do you want to do this?
You can still discuss, but, I mean, you can't deliberate. It could be like advanced participation.
Uh, you can start. I mean, uh, I don't think there's much in the budget other than the fifty-seven acre park expenditure. Um, I think we had, um. I gotta hit my button. Uh, the fifty-seven acre park, the, um, equipment for fifty-seven acre maintenance, and, um, then, um, the Public Works, um, body to help with fifty-seven acre park, um, uh, the camera, uh, trailer, um. I think.
Which picture?
Uh, I'm on the last page.
I guess going to the major differences, I'll just go down the list, start at the top on the expense side or operation, the expense side. Management fees went from, in theory, sixty-one thousand to a hundred thousand. Um, that's up for discussion, but, I mean, I think Caesar's been following the grants for us, helping us with the businesses that he's helping us with. We had to go pay an executive director. We would know where to get close to a hundred thousand dollars for a good one. So I don't have a problem with that personally, but, I mean, it's open for discussion. It is seventy-five thousand dollar increase, but we did away with Ronnie, which was thirty-six thousand, so in theory, sixty-one thousand. So it's thirty-nine thousand dollar increase from last year, real money. Um, going down the list. We segregated the three-eight agreement. Line item was cookies, and then we still left a hundred thousand dollars for business retention for next year, in case we have a deal similar or something come up that we want to help a business or assist a business either in the coming to town or staying in town. So I left that in the budget. Um, the miscellaneous expense, the Placer AI, this is a service that's very, very fascinating. I know Dustin's familiar with it. I've set through a presentation. Caesar's set through two or three presentations now, but it's a service that can track cell phones. Uh, they actually pulled up the actual number of people that came into Kima for July fourth, gave us a number. They can tell you where they went beforehand and where they went afterwards. They can tell you where they stayed, if they stayed in the hotel. It's a lot of information. It's going to be as good as we use it, and, uh, I think it has a lot of benefits. It's actually fifteen thousand a year for the actual service.
Correct.
But there's a three thousand dollar caveat to that, and then that three thousand dollars, if we, you can actually do predictive analysis on what businesses are missing in Kima's city limits. So if you determine that a certain business is missing, you can click on the link and it'll give you within ninety-three or four percent accuracy, the person to contact in the middle state side to see if they would be interested in coming to Kima. And I can tell you from past experience, I spend three, sometimes two weeks trying to track down the right person. So having the right person, to me, is worth three thousand dollars, but, uh, it's fifteen thousand for the service and the three thousand for the additional names and numbers of the correct contact people from anywhere from Academy to Cactus Jacks to, you can just go right on the list. So, um, the other, the fifty-seven acre nature facility, that's the exact amount that we put in for the grant to hopefully complete spaces three, four, and seven.
Three, four, five, and seven.
Three, four, five, seven? Okay. Um, I started talking to the Texas Parks and Wildlife in March or April. Um, got everything submitted, so we got the extra points for Master Park Plan, and then Caesar's turned everything in the first week of August. So the feedback I got back in April, May, June was very, very positive. So we won't know till January, though. But if we were to be awarded, there'd be seven hundred fifty thousand coming from the state. So it'd be actually one point five million dollars being spent at the park. It'd be a one-to-one match. And then there's some additional fees that we have to pay for engineering that aren't included in the grant, which is the twenty-five thousand two seventy-eight. Um, the camera trailer, I don't know if y'all have been to the fifty-seven acre park, but there's a trailer that actually has, is it three or four cameras?
Four.
I think it's three, four.
Four PTZ cameras.
Yeah, it's four cameras that are monitoring the park, that have motion detecting. It actually has audio, so if we want to set it up where if somebody's in the park after eight o'clock, it can actually say something. I know some of the neighbors in Keema Oaks didn't like that feature. It was a little loud, but, uh, it is capable. We also looked at installing solar cameras underneath the canopy. My only concern with that is, is that park's going to be moving with the different phases. I think this trailer has a lot more versatility for the time being, so we can move it around as the park's being developed, and we could capture more of it with that. We don't have power out there, so that's going to be always an issue. And this is thirty thousand for two years, and after the two years, we own the trailer, and it drops down to eight thousand dollars a year. The trailer's ours, but it's eight thousand dollars, eighty-five, eight, 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 five.
Eighty-eight. I thought it was up to eighty-eight. It was eight thousand, eight hundred.
For the services, but, I mean, uh, they can pull it up in the police department. It's in the cameras in there, so I just have a, if we have a half million, I think we're eight hundred thousand out there we've already spent. If somebody wants to vandalize that, I just think it would be egg in our face personally. So that's why that's in.
Do you think, Dan, that it will be optional camera?
Yes, I think eventually we do put permanent camera systems in there.
Okay.
And then this could be actually utilized by the police department. I mean, we had, we could use this in other aspects of the town. So, but I think for the time being, as the park expands and it, it's such a moving park that we don't have access to cameras, I think this gives us a lot more versatility as we're building out the park. And then in future years, we start putting in solar cameras. Just my opinion. That's why this is a budget workshop, just, um, but that's kind of the thinking that I had, just, because the solar cameras were like fourteen thousand, I think.
There was different types, yeah. There's some that are more expensive than others, but some were up to fourteen thousand dollars.
Very limited on what you can do, or this, they can move around and, and, I mean, it can see incredible. We can actually start doing people counting with this, this trailer, so we know how many people entered the park over a thirty-day period. There's a lot of things we could do with this, this trailer, but then they also could use it for July fourth if needed. There's some things that we could use it in town. I think it could be utilized more than just the park in the future. So.
Darren, can I just comment on the trailer real quick? Um, for Fourth of July, we, remember, we rented one. We had it here for a month. We started using it at the park before we got, uh, this one. This is one of the ones that we got during that timeframe. Through our discussions and other companies, we were to get a total of four that we utilized. So we had them all throughout the city. So it's, it's a great tool to have because it allows you to have the flexibility and the mobility for PD. We can target them to certain areas of high traffic, you know, if they're entering the city, exiting the city, what have you. So provided a lot of safety. We had a lot of people tell us that they're really appreciative of having that there. Uh, we had one in the Walmart parking lot, one in the Target parking lot, even though Target's not in our, our city limits. We knew a lot of the folks that were going there were going to come towards our fire, uh, um, towards the fireworks show. So it definitely increased the amount of safety that we had available during the time. So we appreciate the support that we had towards that, and it's definitely a, you know, safety measure to have.
I think there was five camera systems that came in here to display their product here in July fourth. So they got to test each camera, its functionalities, and this is the one that the police department liked the most. So.
Very thorough. They were very, very thorough in their review.
If you look at the hundred and seven, five hundred under park maintenance equipment, it's in here. Been a lot of discussion on all this piece of equipment, and I've spent way more time on, I know more about this equipment than I ever anticipated in my life ever knowing about it. Um, but to, to maintain the fifty-seven acre park and to mow the berm and to keep the park up to the standards that the park is gravitating to, this is a piece of equipment that was recommended. There was actually a larger piece of equipment recommended by Public Works. It was like a hundred and twenty thousand dollars higher. Um, I think this will be sufficient for KCDC needs.
What line, sorry, what line is this in? Nine nine zero five?
Oh.
Nine nine, zero zero.
It's, uh, there's no line. It just says fifty-seven acre park maintenance equipment.
Okay.
Ten, four.
Because the slope mowers, it's too much, um, angle on the, on the berm for the slope mowers to effectively or safely mow the berm. So this piece of equipment will allow them that capabilities. I know there's some questions between Meritage and the fifty-seven acre park. I talked to Chris.
Barnes, Barnes.
Chris Barnes, yeah, Chris Barnes, Monday. They got with a contractor. They were starting next week to remove the fence between Meritage and the park, and they're going to remove all the trees along that fence line, too. So they're going to open it up so we can start maintaining it. And then I'm working, getting access from their HOA because they got ten-foot accessibility behind the fence so that we can run this piece of equipment behind the, on that easement and be able to mow the backs out of the park through the drainage ditch. So that's all being worked on, not completed, but working on. And the last thing was the fifty-two thousand dollars, and that's for the one person that we say it's going to take out of Public Works to maintain the fifty-seven acre park. Because the mowing demands and everything else are going to go way up now that we have it completed. We were mowing it maybe once a month, maybe every six weeks. Uh, that's not going to be acceptable with a new park. So it's, it's figured in here for one Public Works person to, uh, pretty much be designated. Well, I don't think there'll ever be one, for safety reasons, there'll never be one in the park.
Correct.
But we just calculated the hours that we assumed it would take to maintain the park and equated to one person. So then we might see two or three people out there, but that's more safety. So, so that's where we got to this point. So I think I've covered all the things that were kind of not just natural expenses that we've always done. If there's anything else in here that. Oh, the only other thing is the Gulf Coast Transit District. I don't know if y'all remember, but, uh, they came in and did a presentation for us, and it's to provide transportation in Galveston County for veterans, uh, people that needed a doctor's appointments. So we have it slated where it's a one-third city, one-third KCDC, and one-third hot funds.
That is correct. And also, um, this would also allow folks to get to and from work. We have a lot of folks that work at the Boardwalk and Walmart. Those two employers combined employ over eleven hundred employees, many of which don't live in the city limits, and the biggest barrier that most of them are having are transportation to and from work. So this would allow them the flexibility to have that. That would be the KCDC component also tied to this request.
Was the price, was the price of joint contingent on Clear Lake Shores joint?
Yes, it was. That was thirty thousand dollars if they did not join. We did make a pitch there to their EDC last week, Tuesday, if I'm not mistaken, and, uh, they considered it. I got word last Wednesday that they will not be pursuing this at this time. Had they agreed to do it, it would have been a split of about eighteen thousand to twelve thousand.
So the price that's in here is without them?
That's without them, yes, sir. It would have been thirty thousand combined if we would have been able to split it.
This is my shocked face that it is.
I was, I was trying to find a way to reduce our costs.
All right. Thank you for your.
I would say collectively, we made a valid effort, you know, putting the presentation together and speaking to them, but they just don't find the need at this time. We're hoping they'll reconsider in the future.
I do want to add, uh, Ruiz and I have been working on, uh, the camera trailer to finalize that number. So on, uh, all the specs and stuff with the salesman, so.
Hey. I just kind of went over everything that's in the budget that was kind of unique. Um, opening it up for questions. That's kind of where we're at right now. So if anybody has any concerns, wants to know more information.
So I got a question for, I guess assuming for Caesar, but the, I lost it. Contract labor for twenty-four thousand dollars. Line item eight five one five.
I'd left that in there because we had a, a meeting where we had discussed maybe bringing in a service that I haven't perfected yet. So, but at this point, I don't, I mean, we probably could omit that at this point. Because I haven't had any luck to find the kind of person that I'm looking for. We were looking for somebody to help us with grants. Caesar's getting so overloaded with all the stuff that we've got coming down the pikes. So we're looking for some assistance. I mean, maybe we still need to leave some in there for grant writing because a lot of the legwork, there's a lot of paperwork that goes into a grant before it actually gets submitted. So there might be some need to bring in a third party for some of these larger grants to assist staff and get them, because if they're not done correctly, if you lose one or two points, you probably lose the grant. One thing I have learned about this is very, very competitive.
Very competitive.
You know, if you don't get, dot all your, you know, cross all your Ts and dot all your Is, you're most likely not going to be successful. So, but I don't know how many grants are coming upcoming. I mean, I know if we get the park grant, then that's going to be the focus for the next eight to twelve months, probably, perfecting that one point five million dollar grant. So I don't know what else. KCDC might be looking for grant funding concerning.
There was one grant that was submitted. Um, just got word yesterday, um, for the, uh, it was nineteen point eight million dollars for the streets, sidewalks, everything else. Uh, it does not look like we're going to move forward in funding. Probably the biggest grant that we've applied for to date. Um, but we were not going to move forward on it. But the best thing about that is it's cyclical, and they told us exactly what we need to work on. So now we need to start, it takes us quite a bit of time to check off those boxes because that's a rather big grant. It's a federal grant. It's a lot of bells and whistles that are tied to that one. Uh, we are still in the running for two applications right now. One of them is Texas Park and Wildlife. The other one is the, uh, GLO through their KEPRA program and that Orco Mesa program. So we're, we're still looking to see if we qualify for either one of those. That was a project of special merit. They were looking forward to hopefully hearing back from. Uh, attaining those grants would, would allow us to finish, you know, both would, would allow us to finish the park rather quickly. So yes, it would exhaust a lot of that, but there are a lot of other endeavors and things that, um, are, have been expressed, uh, to do. For example, there's a linear park. There's additional sidewalks throughout the city for community development. And I think we, we, we would consider finding grant funds that would allow us to, to provide these services, although not directly, um, KCDC related. Uh, there are a lot of police plans that we're also pursuing for, for, for public safety that would allow us some, some assistance. If we're able to find any grants that, uh, allow us to help fire, it would be important for us to do so as well, even though it's a not direct benefit to us. But if we're able to bring their ISO rating down from a two to one, it'll be a significant savings to our residents as well as our, uh, business owners here within the city because it would reduce their insurance cost per year. Currently, the city sits as an ISO rating of two. Uh, they do need some resources in order to get to a one. The biggest hurdle is having a ladder truck. It was a big challenge of mine where, where, where I was at before. Um, the biggest challenge of having a ladder truck you actually have. So maybe with some of the other resources that we're able to make that happen could result in having an ISO rating of one, which is the absolute highest rating you could have. So it would help a lot when it comes to insurance rate for a lot of our employers.
That wouldn't be KCDC really, that's what we, don't know what we could have upcoming on the KCDC side for, unless you were aware of a grant that I'm not aware of. I mean, I think I've barked up as many trees as I can bark.
The only thing is we could definitely have some economic development grants that could help offset some cost, um, for any utilities, any connections, anything of that nature, that, that may be able to assist. Um, those are something that we are looking for to actually applying for. But right now, there's a lot of things in limbo as to when the next release date will happen with those and how much they'll be funded. So once we hear about those, we, we may want to be aggressive with some of those grants.
Would it make more sense, um, for us to go on with the city to hire a assistant for Caesar to delegate some of these tasks to, or maybe a internship for him?
Somebody to consider.
Would you be comfortable with that is really what I'm asking.
I, I would, I would never turn away good help. Um, Patty and I actually were just talking about today, we had our, our weekly meeting discussing how we could find ways to address a lot of these KCDC things that we'd like to get done, um, because we both have very lofty goals, long list of other things for us to address when it comes to ribbon cuttings and promoting some of these businesses and so forth. So we would always welcome that. I think an internship program, something we both discussed, um, the, the other assistant programs would be great. Uh, we're, we're open to it. We are definitely open to it. We are working with workforce solutions to see if they can free up some funds and some folks that would qualify to come and help and do those, those specific things. So it'd be great if we can. If, if, if we're able to, then we would love to. Uh, so I, I would, I would love to entertain those possibilities.
I guess the only other comment I have that would figure, or I guess what's not in here is the, there is a project that's been tabled by council twice that this board approved that's not going to be funded in this cycle. So effectively retracting that from council consideration.
Um.
It can always come back later. I get it.
Right.
Or the following fiscal.
Correct.
About six trillion.
Yeah, the one and a half million, which was.
So the idea with that is, at, at, at present time, it probably behooves us to make sure that we have all our ducks on the road before pursuing that one. Uh, it is probably going to be a few months before we're able to do that. It'll probably get us into the next fiscal year before we make that decision. The beauty of it is, is that if any unused funds that you have this year, unless you want to dedicate them for another project, you can actually hold those, keep them in your KCDC growth fund because they're unutilized funds. So it would allow you to do that and then.
Well, it's like the fifty-seven acre park, we got seven seventy-five, but, I mean, if we do not get awarded the grant, then I don't anticipate spending seven seventy-five. That was the whole idea.
Sure.
So.
You could say me, tell me, hey, do phase seven.
It was roughly five hundred thousand, so you put two seventy-five back in the league.
Right. So roughly, it, I guess it would depend on how aggressive we want to be. The beauty with these phases, you could also break some of the phases apart. Um, there's also the possibility that with this piece of equipment, that we might be able to do some of the demo. It won't save a whole lot, but it'll at least maybe clearing the path that we would need to get some of this work done. So whatever amounts we could partake in would probably behooves. Everything we could do to get to the end, end goal, that's what we're shooting for.
Well, no, I set myself a goal. The park being done in five years, so I don't know if it doesn't, and it probably will never get done because you'll be having to reservice the first part. So if you don't get it done in a timely frame, then you're going to be servicing the phase one before you have a chance to finish the park, what I've seen in these large projects like this. So that's why it's been of, was, was not my high note, but it has become my high note in the last hundred and twenty days.
And, and there's other funding sources that we could maybe go after for certain portions of it. For example, the outdoor classroom, we can go to FFEA. Um, the, the, uh, the bird watching tower or the wildlife watching tower, we could probably go to the, to, to the estuary, uh, uh, grant program. Maybe partner with Galveston.
We got to get a little further before we can have that conversation with them because you can't even get to wherever we're trying to go at this point.
That's, that's, that's part of.
I talked to Delaro, Texas City. We're outside of their market region for sponsorship. Marathon's still in play. I haven't gotten a yes or no, which is a good sign. So, um, so we're still looking for a sponsor for the park, so.
We're, 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 we're very hopeful, too. We've got, um, just confirmed that we've got two, two interns, coincidentally. Um, they're interns, but they can only be used for certain, um, facts, uh, projects. One of them, uh, is an environmental advocacy. The other one would be environmental fundraising. So we would try to have them put the sponsorship package together, work on us, work with us on those two things. They're coming from Southeast Asia. Uh, they'll be here for about five weeks, Patty, if I'm not mistaken. So they'll be here beginning the end of September through October twenty-fourth, if I'm not mistaken. So we have some projects that we're trying to tackle with them. We're sharing them with the Galveston Bay Foundation. That's zero cost grant program that we were able to apply for.
So if we were to hire a third-party source to help us with grant writing for, say, two or three grants, how much money are we talking about?
Usually, usually most of the grants that would be written would be based on volume. For example, um, one of the grants that we submitted was thirteen hundred pages of, of stuff to upload. Uh, so to answer your question, it would depend. It would depend on the size of the grant. There are some that we could probably knock out in a day. You know, five hundred bucks here, a thousand bucks there. Um, some of them would be a little bit more costly. So I would tell you, I would, I would venture to say to keep that there, depending on what you choose to do. And the beauty of it is, if we don't use it, you know, we could always just have it in your surplus from, from year to year. Um, I think you guys have, the improvement helped frugal. I, I like to be, if at all possible, when it comes to, to, to taxpayers' funds. Uh, we're not going to go after anything unless we absolutely.
People who are special, special teams and.
Absolutely. There are some, and some are costly, some are not. I, I, I've worked with a few. We've had a couple help us with some of the projects here. Um, it would depend. A lot of them are going to tell you, either they're going to be contractual, they're going to give you a flat rate per month and say, yeah, all right, just give me, you know, fifteen hundred bucks a month and I'll be your, your contractual person to do extra amount of grants. There's some that'll probably be different. The problem with that is a lot of them, some of them don't charge at all. Some, some grant companies don't charge, but they'll say they want a percentage of whatever you bring in, or they'll want to make sure that they get paid on the grant administration side.
So if you have a lot of the.
The problem with that is a lot of them, some of them don't charge at all. Some, some grant companies don't charge, but they'll say they want a percentage of whatever you bring in. Or they'll want to make sure that they get paid on the grant administration side.
So, if you have a lot of the longer tenure, that they're willing to do, like, it were X amount of hours for that retainer period. If we didn't have grants, what else could you do a lot of them for in that time period?
Ton of things we could use for. Usually folks that are grant writers are going to be able to help with, you name it, press release, website information, um, abundance of telecommunications stuff that you can get done with, with those folks, uh, reaching out, soliciting to, um, to, to, to different businesses. I mean, there's a lot of different focuses and uses for somebody like that to do.
I mean, technically, that could even help with the strat plan.
Absolutely.
Figuring into what actions you want to take.
Setting up all of your, your timelines, your, your phase plans as to what you're going to, you're, you're, you're going to make. Absolutely. Those are all things that can be done fairly easily. And those are all things you could fit into that. I mean, we, we'd have to open negotiations, find somebody to do it and someone that's open that would agree to the terms and to whatever the pricing would be. Like I said, there's plenty of folks that we've used in the past to do that, so.
Do you need that one any day?
I do. I do. There's several. There's several out there. We currently use one of the companies now for the CDBG grant.
But if we didn't have to try some on.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
We use public management on the drainage ramp that was received by the city. I mean, there's, there's companies out there, so.
Public management, Grantworks, Hawthorne, I mean, there's.
They're usually pretty sure they're going to get it before they stick their nose in it. I have learned that.
Yes. And there's also a threshold that they have, a formula that'll say, depending on the agency, they know how much they ask for. So, they know how much, uh, how much effort they're going to have to put into it.
Yeah.
So, they're all able to calculate what their threshold is. They know that they won't qualify or apply for anything less than a certain amount usually. There's a lot of stuff that has to happen behind the scenes too. I mean, we've got a four-page letter of things that we've got to get together for the next time we apply for the one funding source that we didn't get recently. And there's plans and documents and working with, you know, uh, whether it's HAC or TCQ or the Department of Transportation, both state and federal. So, there's a lot of things that we would need to get accomplished in order to prepare ourselves for the next time. Uh, but even working on our capital improvement plan, there's a lot of things we could get somebody to come in here and help do, so. I think what you've got there is, is good. I, I like to have proof of concept. Uh, we dropped it from 36 to 24. Um, we thought that that was probably more realistic to what we could do. It also depends on where, what route we go with any other assistance that we receive. But wanted to make sure that we had that, that ability, uh, to, to facilitate whatever comes our way. We would need to have a full cycle of grant cycle, then some of these grants don't come out annual anymore.
Grant writers.
Yeah.
Line item, so maybe we want to make an adjustment when we do that.
Sure.
It's kind of a broad stricken, you say contract labor gets a little bit more leeway.
You've also got professional fees up there at 15,000. We earmarked that. That's what we earmarked Ryan for the, uh, for the, for, for, for the strategic plan possibly. The 15,000 is.
It's all for professional, that's why this meeting is for, is because we need to, we really need to prove this tonight so we can go to the city and hopefully.
Eighty-three, eleven.
Complete their budget because we'll be on time constraints when we wait till the next meeting. Because they have to have two readings, right, the city?
We do have to have two meetings without the budget, yes, sir.
On the city side?
Yes, sir.
To adopt.
It'll be September 3rd and September 7th, what's 17.
So.
Line item 9900, the parking traffic and sidewalks, we're paying for the camera trailer?
It would be if you pursued to have a camera trailer for 57 acre park.
Okay.
The one that's out there currently.
The one that's out there right now. If you wanted to keep that. Or some variation of that.
We look at solo cameras, but I mean, the park's going to be changing so much, you're talking about police department, that can be moved around as construction's being done so that the picture will be a little bit better than just having three cameras that are fixed to the park itself. We can actually move that camera trailer to the back of the park or the wooded areas when they start that next phase and it can actually dual purpose and be used over there as well. So, as we, that's, that's one of my biggest fears is, I mean, it's a huge park and yes, there's a lot of positives, but there'd be just, just as many negatives that can come out of that park. And the flip side of that coin, so we want to alleviate or at least try our best to alleviate, you know, having issues at the park.
We've, um, eighty-five, fifty-four, we've completely eliminated Mrs. Chamber support.
What account was that?
Uh, eighty-five, fifty-four. Uh, topical hospice.
I think it's coming out of a different line item, um, because it doesn't look like it was budgeted this year either.
Well, okay, yeah, because I see, um, I see memberships and dues, so I'm wondering if it's coming out of that one. Is that what's coming from? Or is that 20 grand part of the dues that we're paying to the chamber or split with the city?
I'd have to check on that and let, and let you know to confirm, but I'm pretty sure that it is. Ryan, could you confirm that?
Yeah.
On dues and memberships?
So, what is that agreement there?
So, that's something that's a little bit older and that's kind of why I was questioning it because we haven't really brought it up for discussion in a while. Um, but it's, it was a program that we had while there were, they had all the, um, construction going on, 196, where we paid for half of the membership dues for, um, the Clear Lake Chamber of Commerce. Um, so we paid 50% of that and, um, but we don't have the construction anymore. So, is it actually necessary for us to sponsor that for our businesses?
That'd be my question because our sales tax numbers went through the roof this last couple of months, so.
Thank God.
Businesses are doing very well since construction has been completed, so I still think Barry, uh, food lovers is for a new business. I think it's a great way to get out there and get some.
Yeah, I'd like to continue.
I mean, I'm not so sure if you're already a business, then we continue to do that, but I mean, the first 12 months if they're willing to do something, I think it's a great way for, I don't think they understand the power of marketing here. My wife says it all the time, they're like, these new restaurants opening, they don't post anything. She's like, if you're not posting, people aren't coming, and this is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody else is. I mean, so, I keep telling Mo and Lisa that, I keep, I told Pasta Margarita that today, like, you've got to stay on social media. Your location's not prime location and people just haven't got the custom come to you on the regular leases.
Yeah, I, we, uh, we're still seeing a lot of, regardless of the sales tax numbers, we're still seeing a lot of turnover in our businesses right now. So, is sponsorships from the chambers still the answer to that? I don't think so.
I would agree with you.
I think Baffle makes more sense than Chambers.
And I'll, I'll have to check because I'm pretty sure that that amount that's in there is actually for, for the Baffle. Because I do know we just had a, a couple more businesses. Uh, Alberto's took advantage of the Baffle opportunity. If I remember correctly, I think we just processed a payment for them to, to have the, the Baffle, um, membership. Um, and I think we're pitching it to Pasta Margarita as well to see if they'll, they'll take advantage of it.
Do you know who it was that just joined Baffle?
Who was it just joining? It was Ali Bartop?
Okay.
Yeah. If I'm not mistaken, that's the name of the restaurant. We could pull the invoice to make sure.
Really good restaurant, if you guys haven't ventured yet.
Yes. We, we just hosted last week, the, uh, the regional city managers meeting. We had, um, about 55 city managers there and that's what we helped them with, uh, for, for lunch. So, it was sponsored and we, we made sure that they got a little taste of Kima. No pun intended.
Market taste of California, but it's okay. Can I see anything else that sticks out to me?
Ms. Patty, could you please, I know Ryan just came back, could you confirm, uh, which account number the Baffle memberships are coming out of? Please, thank you.
On the dues and memberships, that's for the, uh, Bay Houston Economic Partnership. So, especially those like $15,000.
So, that's BayHip.
Do we fund all of BayHip over the city or do we split that with the city? Okay, so I'm not.
I guess it's the first year, is what I thought it would be with the program being. It wouldn't, every year is it? I thought it was.
I don't remember off the top of my head.
I thought it was one year and then if it works for you, then we continue on and we're here to help you be successful, but I mean, you gotta have a good business model to stay in business.
No, no. I, we weren't sponsoring BayHip, we were just doing the chamber.
Right. We haven't sponsored businesses to be at Bay though.
Yeah, we have not sponsored businesses to be at BayHip. We sponsor businesses to be at BayHip. We do Baffle.
Yeah.
Yeah, Baffle.
Could it be Bay Area Houston Food Lovers?
I think that's what.
Yeah, that's what.
Is that a BayHip?
BayHip would make sense for.
They have this Bay Area.
I can go pull the invoice.
As you know, you, we, we just had it, while you were out, we had a question about Bay Area Houston Food Lovers. Am I saying that right? That, that how you say it, Baffle? So. We would also bring this back as needed. If you had a break between now and the sex of that, we could also try to get some more of these questions answered.
It's pretty good, though. I guess I have, I just have a order of question. Do we need to recall this open with a call to deliver any changes for the next meeting?
I have it.
Okay.
Just take four.
We didn't have four to start.
Not for a workshop, you don't need it for.
Well, if we were going to deliver, if we did, oh. If we were going to make changes, then otherwise we're just talking, which is fine. That was my.
Any more questions concerning this thought?
Um, no, I don't even know what I have to think about this.
I guess my last thought is we're playing closest to the pin with this budget going in, is here at the bottom. Feel like. I don't know how comfortable I am with that, but I guess I could be swayed.
What's the new breakdown in management fees on 800 or 8,000? It went from, um, plus five to 100 grand. Oh, wait, I see it, it's right down that margin. That's a lot, though.
Well, it was 25,000 and then you had Ronnie, which was 36,000, so it was really 61,000 that we eliminated. So, it's really 30,000 dollar increase. But I can contest that Caesar's working a lot for KCDC with businesses coming into town and projects that we're working on because I spend 30 hours a week with him, so.
At least.
I don't know how many hours a week he works, but.
He looks like he loves that time.
Oh, it's.
I know he calls me at 7:30, 8 o'clock sometimes, I'm just like, oh.
Both 7:30s or 8:00 sometimes. AM and PM.
There's a lot going on in Kima, which is all positive, but there is a lot going on right now that directly affects both the city and KCDC, so they've both got to be voices in this direction of the city's going, so.
I'm convinced that at some point it'll slow down, but right now, there's timing and opportunity. It'll, 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 it'll take some time before we get there, but I have a firm belief that we can try to drive this tax rate down, increase our sales tax and keep the businesses running well within the city. We just have to properly develop and redevelop what we've got going on.
Well, the water and sewer 96 is ahead of schedule, so they're saying maybe by the end of the year. So, once that's completed, I think that whole corridor from Lawrence to Mary is just going to explode once that project completion. We're talking about it now, but it, it's got a lot more noise. Uh, we've got other projects that are in the works that are of large magnitude, so I can contest that we spend a lot of time on team calls and team calls and, so, there's a lot of good things going on in Kima currently, so.
And, uh, for the beautification, um, eighty-five, fifty-two, sorry if you guys went over that before I got here, but what is, what exactly is that allocated for?
It's just been in the budget, so I'm thinking signage is what I had in mind, just in my thought process.
Okay.
But I don't know, that's I could probably cover a sign. But I don't think we'll get a sign done with construction still going on. I don't want to get too hot and heavy with it, but we probably need to start doing some conceptual designs this next year when construction is done. I still don't know where you do it on this other entrance way because I'm not sure. I mean, I'm open to ideas, I just don't know. I kind of have an idea coming from the north, I guess. I've already talked to the landowner, he's, you know, open to the idea, but with the construction, I mean, there's no sense in us spending any money on something that's calling it toward my textile. And so, I don't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Want to do anything until that part of 146 is completed. This is my thought process, but I mean, I still think we probably need to have those conversations and start laying the groundwork so that when it is completed, we can move forward and get some sort of welcoming sign coming in to Kima. This way, I'm open to ideas, if somebody has an idea, I'd love to hear it because without our lower bridge, I'm just not sure. I mean, I've thought about the third floor of the community center. I just keep saying that that's, we need to capitalize on that because when you're going north, I mean, that's, you definitely see it very well. Uh, I don't know about coming south, but that's the thing, I don't know how you capture people coming to, from the south, coming to the south side, so. I, I'm open to ideas because I've driven 20 times in the last couple of months trying to figure out what would you do, like maybe you could capture both at the same time. I'm not sure how you would do this, it's, there's two bridges.
Charlie, um, looks like you spent 27, almost 28,000 bucks two years ago. Uh, we budgeted 25,000 last year, we felt the need to keep it the same, but we, there was a.
Was the fire hydrants, wasn't it?
No, um, it was the.
Bitches.
Yeah, it was the first round of benches and trash yards and then, uh, also all of the pickup events that they did. Uh, the, the fire hydrants cost the city minimal expenses. Uh, and then the last, uh, last, the last time we spent that much money was on the second round of trash yards and benches.
So, um, there was a, uh, a, a study done by a group named Landology that I was able to dig up and find where they studied where it made most sense to do the entrance sign and so forth, but using, I mean, that was done before the construction was all laid out. So, the idea was to possibly bring that back. Um, you know, you have, Kima's very unique, it's not very many places you're going to have that have five different gateways. You have the north and the south of 146, you've got 294, 518 and 96. Very unique in that sense and you also have the entrance of 6th Street. So, really, if you look at it, there's six different gateways that bring you into the downtown, the city in general, and then the lighthouse district. Uh, so those are all possibilities of location where you could do some type of signage if you were going to do something there. But there's also the possibility, if you wanted to do that, um, a, any business facade incentives, there's any business that needed new business signage or something else you want to spruce things up with. Technically, that could follow that, also any cleanup events, things that you could possibly look at doing in the future.
That's kind of what I was aiming for, which is maybe the business facade side of things, uh, but plans for, I think three sides are free too, so I didn't leave it like, Dustin's had to leave a lot, what, what we're on here, so. I'm okay with it.
Still think flashing wrong way signs need to be installed at some point.
Flashing.
Is that a KCDC thing or is that a city thing?
It's a traffic thing, the business district.
Flashing.
It was tied into the project that is, that was, that's, that we're gonna move on from.
The street escape.
Cause the wrong way thing, although better, still happens.
I don't want to speak for the group in general, but obviously you're likely to have quite a bit of surplus this year, and you've got some line items that you could possibly benefit from putting, so, and I don't know the pricing breakdown, location or anything of that nature from that, to extrapolate that from the Sixth Street portion of that project that was being presented, but perhaps some of those funds could be allocated towards.
Public Works did a, Public Works have, that's not that old.
Yeah.
And I think the contractor gave the recommendation in order to put them instead of, they don't all need to flash, but there are some that I think would benefit.
So if there's a, a need and desire to do that, we can bring that to the September meeting to take action under, or would that be under the, the, you're presenting the street, streetscape project of do the, maybe that expense in September to bring that back? Again, I, I know this is just for consideration, obviously, it needs to be loaded, but.
It made sense to bundle that with the streetscape project because there was more happening there to directly benefit the businesses. Whereas if you're not putting it in on the streetscape project, that doesn't seem like a KCDC. I don't, I don't think we, I don't think that falls under us with that.
Okay.
I think it has to, cause that's really, who does that benefit? Does it benefit the businesses directly or does it benefit the, um, the, the operations of the city? Because there's lots of accidents out there and everything.
Sure. And that's, again, fair, I just want to know that if that's something you want to consider, that you do have a building, you have one meeting left, uh, to, to bring that back. But yes, you're absolutely right. Whatever the will, the, the, uh, council or, or the board would, would choose and we're willing to bring back is needed.
I think this is a budget workshop, so I'm not sure we can discuss that.
Oh, no, but, but if that test that desire at the six o'clock meeting, you can give that direction if you so choose. If that's the only way to do it, then we can gladly do that.
There's no more questions or comments?
Can I make a call?
Um.
Could you hit the button, make sure it's green?
Okay. Uh, so my comment here, just looking at this budget and not knowing anything, um, I would urge, if we're trying to get more grants, to work on a tourism grant. I think that there's a lot of money in a tourism grant, um, being that, uh, we are a destination place. There's tourism that we're trying to drive back. Uh, the consensus is that a lot of cities in this area might not think that we're open for business, that there's still construction going on with the bridge, which my experience first coming here, and it was absolutely painful to actually live in the city and move around. And I think that's kind of what the idea is, that, is that if we put more invested into a plan to essentially discover Kima like it was back in the heyday, I would urge you to save some room here for potentially some type of additional marketing that will allow you to draw in some tourism each year. If you're working on grants, it's gonna be based on festivals, it's gonna be based on things that put Kima on the map. Um, so I would just urge with not knowing everything that's going on with this budget, obviously, um, just to have a little bit more wiggle room, i- if there's something that comes up that could potentially be a project that I think might help bring more eyeballs to this city. Um, I didn't get any applications done in today or for this meeting, I just kind of sat in as an observer. Um, but I'm truly invested in Kima, so I really want to be a part of these meetings and the city, uh, meetings as well. Um, so I just wanted to kind of comment that, and that's all I wanted to say, so thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody that have any more comments, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn at five fifty.
Let's see if it's.
All right. What did you do with the old?
It doesn't work. It doesn't work.
Sykes, nameplates?
You don't have a laptop? Yeah, but we're in the, we're in the network, so, so we can just plug it in, that's what I'm asking. Yeah.
How's everybody in Kima? Excellent. Uh, seeing we have a call, I'm gonna call to order the KCDC regular meeting, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, at six P M. Uh, item number two, invitation address board, we don't have anybody. Item number three, proclamation, presentations, awards, and community spotlights, I don't believe I have any this evening. Uh, item four, Dustin, you want to start off with board member comments?
Thank you, everybody that's here today. Let's get the show in a row.
Ray?
Thanks for coming out.
No comments?
Okay. Uh, item number five, president's comments. I don't have anything to report tonight, so let's just get this meeting rolling. Um, item number six, city administrator report, Caesar?
We, whether it's six or seven, I'll just go ahead and, and have a discussion about the strategic plan. If you guys could, uh, go to that document, very first item. I want to thank Ms., uh, Ms. Jackie and Ms. Tacklin, uh, Wieland, who, uh, worked with me to, uh, sat one afternoon, spent a couple hours just getting to know each other and going over, putting this together that, um, this body asked us to work on. So if you look at item seven A, we summarized what this would look like, what the project overview would look like. For the most part, grasping at what we had heard from discussion and, and what the needs were. So I'm sure you've already had a chance to look at this, if this is the direction we want to go in, uh, the recommendation that was considered earlier at the, the budget through the budget workshop would be to go out and solicit someone to come out here and help us with this process, uh, to bring together a strategic plan for the city that's focused on community development and economic development. Um, what we came up with are, uh, planning ideas and really the pillars to focus on. We came up with these five pillars, which were number one, economic development and redevelopment. Two was community character and identity, three, infrastructure, both physical, human, and civic. Uh, four would be public safety for resilience and well-being, and five would be sustainable growth and what our, our financial strategy would be for the future. Um, in doing so, um, it would be an entire process that's put together along with about a six-month plan to get this done. Um, in, in order to do so, we would probably, one, put an RFP together, that would be the next step, should you want us to do that and bring that back. Uh, so we're seeking, uh, a direction if this is where we want to be. And this is, and calculates what we were trying to say. If not, then please give us your feedback as what, what, what it is that you'd like to see different. The thought would be to, uh, create an RFP, get this thing kicked out, have a community meeting, uh, both a joint, uh, council and KCDC workshop, we could say, look, this is what we haven't envisioned to do, move this thing forward, uh, and then bring this back, have public meetings, charrette, uh, style meetings for workshops, where folks would have enough time to come together. So you'd have your visioning and prioritization meetings, uh, and then draft a plan for public view. Then come to checklist that we talked about, we talked about briefly at this last, uh, area and then through our meetings, where we keep ourselves accountable. So every decision that we make would be tied to how does this align with our, with our strategic plan. Um, many cities do this where little items come up on the agenda until that's the case, so it is our decision, whatever we would choose to do. Uh, this is a brief synopsis, I know it's a lot of reading, but there's some potential taglines and names for, for, for the plan, should we choose to go this route. Um, again, thank you, Ms. Jackie, for, for your expertise in this. And I pretty much took our notes and kind of mashed them together, if you will, to create this document before you. So, um, we'll entertain some questions and I guess representing both Ms. Jackie and myself, uh, for the work that was assigned to us to do.
Do we have an estimated cost?
The estimated cost that we projected was roughly fifteen thousand, not knowing what to expect. Um, but we do know that.
Now, I guess that's my question, cause I don't have that.
Um, this, this was budgeted, listed in the budget.
It was under professional fees, the fifty thousand?
It's listed for your consideration.
Thoughts?
The objective was to create a roadmap for what we would do to align both city council, KCDC, and, uh, staff and the team as what we're wanting to move forward.
Now, I've set the two or threes in the past for other towns, and I mean, I know they can be productive, maybe counterproductive at the same time, so it's just a matter of administrating, keeps everybody in focus on what the end game is. I know on the city side, we're trying to budget in twenty thousand dollars to do a road study so we can get a status of all the roads in Kima and a kind of a plan of action as to when's Kima gonna, I mean, Kip gonna have to be redone. And just kind of go down the list, because we, we got roads that are gonna have to be redone in the next three to five years. We can try to figure out how we get the funding to do that, so I'm all fit for this, I just know it's a lot of work and a lot of time has to be contributed by everyone on this board and city council.
I, I don't mind doing it, I just, um, I guess we've done things that are very similar to this in the past, and I'm wondering, and I, this is not me to sound like a naked fancy, but how are we gonna keep it from getting lost? How is it, cause I, I think we've done some version of this about five times since I've been on this.
Um, well, I can only speak for. Well, I can only speak for my experience in it. I've been doing these for sadly, I don't want to tell you how many years, but probably better part of twenty years. I can tell you, I couldn't speak from Ms. Jackie's expertise, but it's obviously pretty well-known. The difference in this case is execution. So you have to have a plan with the end in sight. You have to set up your timelines at the end, it has to be part of the plan. So your implementation and how you pretty much are going to score yourself are very important. From what I've seen from the previous plans that were done, that was never really implemented from the get-go. And I think it's a very important part. How are you going to track, what metrics are you going to use to track that certain things are done? Whether it's quantitative, qualitative, whatever method you're going to go after it. So I think whoever you bring in here, whoever's selected to do that, has to have the end in mind with that. How are we going to validate that we're getting our money's worth, both time, effort, and dollars, to make sure that we're actually getting the outcome that we're hoping to get? So whether those are community surveys, whether that's just, for example, if it was adding streetlights, well, how many less pedestrian accidents or car accidents are we going to have? How much safer do folks feel? How many, how many lights did we add? We started on this day with this money, and now, five years later, we have this money. So this is a fifteen to twenty, excuse me, ten to fifteen-year plan that cast your vision for what you want to do in the future. So I answer some of those questions. Do we want to have street signage? Do we want to have decorative, you know, playfinding? When we want it, what would we like? What type of direction and image do you want to portray for the city of Kima? And I think that's what the direction needs to be here, where sometimes gets meddled. So when the lack of direction or policy, that sometimes would end up happening. By the way, every decision that's made, for example, are we going to go after Baffal? Well, yes, we're going to go after Baffal because it aligns with the strategic plan to help us develop and keep businesses here in Kima. Are we going to go to Christmas Ball? Well, maybe it doesn't align with what we're doing because it doesn't make sense, whatever the capacity may be. So I think along those lines, that's the reason why. And the way to make sure that we validate it is to make sure we have a scorecard. And we make it very, very public facing. So, you know, people can hold us accountable, all of us, all of us that would be involved in this plan. Ms. Jackie, I don't know if you all know-
Well, no, I would echo what you're saying, because, you know, I would tell you that's the challenge coming on to KCDC, is we go through things, but it's not clear where things are strategically aligned or connected. And so the plan becomes the map. And then it becomes the guidance that says, okay, this is what we're working on year one, two, three, four, here's the vision that we're working to, and it's a living document opposed to we did it. And that's the challenge when people say, well, we've done this five times. Okay, yay, you know, but you didn't do anything with it.
We have, the problem is, is that it tends to, every time that there's turnover at City Hall, it gets lost. And people don't know that the other versions of this, that there are other versions of this that exist already. I mean, I'm the oldest, I'm the longest member on this board right now. So I've seen it a few times. I guess my biggest concern is that we're spending fifteen grand, we're looking at spending fifteen grand for something that's already been done. And I'm sure it's not to this extent at all. I just want to make sure, and I'm not saying we shouldn't spend the fifteen grand to do it, that's not what I'm saying at all. I'm just saying there needs to be a process in place that if, God forbid, you know, Caesar gets a, no offense, a job offer for a million dollars on the other side of the country, we want to keep you here. You know, if he gets that and Caesar's gone, that these, that we are still utilizing what we paid for.
So to answer that question, and I'll say this, staff hears me say this all the time, no one person is bigger than the plan. And that's the way we need to carry ourselves with everything that we do. So respectfully to all of you that are up there, all of you that were here before you and all the ones that are here now and the ones that are coming in the future, once you cast this net and say this is what we're standing for, everybody who sits here moving forward is aligning themselves with what we're trying to get done in the future. Now, there will be some modifications and some changes, but regardless of that, if this is what we say this is going to be our battle cry, then it's what we're going to go do for the benefit of Kima. And that's why we want so much public input tied to it, for everybody, from all the residents. So I hear you. I could tell you, just based on what I saw, what I did see, I don't know what was paid for the previous ones, previous plans, but there really wasn't much put together, and it wasn't very clear. And that's what I found, again.
Well, and Caesar and I spend a lot of time talking about how you engage stakeholders and how you involve voices. And even what Tony said tonight about marketing and really thinking about what people see and connect, that, like, your voice, your knowledge, the people you talk to, having people from the community come in and give insight and input shapes it, because, like, we only see what we see. And then you get the town involved because they all have a voice. It doesn't mean everyone gets their way, that's, you know, consensus, and that's the challenge of facilitating. And I can help with that, Caesar can help with that, but you're also going to want a neutral party who is listening differently and listening for commonality, our areas that it's like, okay, that's somebody's little stake in the ground, but that's not really aligned with what you said was the prevailing vision. You know, it's a distraction opposed to energetic alignment.
Again-
No, I agree with you. I have seen board members come up here and create the distraction away from the plan that was there before. And so I like that idea of removing those distractions.
Well, and that really, that's the reason to do it, because then it's the structural bones that when someone wants to go down this rabbit trail, you're like, okay, how does this align? Where does this fit? You know, are we saying that we're doing a sea change? You know, it's like, how does this shake here? If it doesn't, then either we need to change this, or we need to say that's not part of this at this point. And it's not an emotional, it's just a, this is what we decided.
And at least you also have the data to know, or the backing to know, that whatever decisions you're making is supported or not supported by the strategic plan, which you're always welcome to go against it. If that's what the body decides, that's fine, but it is your battle cry. It's your base, it's your north, if you will. So again, Ms. Jacklin and I, we're given the task by this board to bring this forward. We brought together what we thought would be a general framework for input to be provided on this plan and things that you might like to see or not see. Obviously, this is just a very basic document that we would use to then put together an RFP. Whoever would be selected, you would interview, decide if you want to go, don't want to go this route, whatever the case is. And then you make the decision that afterwards, hey, tell us what you think. Because I'm sure Rand is going to want to come in here and give the input as well. There wasn't going to be anyone to tell us, yeah, no, you guys, that's patterns, kind of, doesn't make sense. Here's why it makes sense, or here's why it doesn't. And here's what our SWOT analysis would be of the situation, because we have our own, but we're also biased because we're all here. So you want that from a third party as well.
Now, what is the cost to maintain the strategic plan for the following years?
So that would be a cost, that would be an administrative cost based on us. And that would be the task that we would have together collectively as a council of KCDC and staff. So that would be whether it's tracking on the website, for example, well, what are the metrics we're going to use to track it? For example, if one of the things we talked about, public safety on here, well, what's our crime rate? Right, so that's a collective thing. Now, we have to gather that and report it, which we started doing through our monthly reports through city council, so it's easier to bring that into light. Maybe it's reducing the property taxes. Well, how are we going to do that? Well, here's the evidence. We're raising more sales tax, we're doing more citations, we're doing whatever else, more permitting, then here's what we're going to do to try to increase or decrease our reliance on property tax.
Well, even the AI tool that you were talking about in the budget. So if that gives you data on what we're missing or what's needed, then you're strategically looking at from a business attraction. It's not just, oh, come here because, you know, you can. It's who do we want? And who are we targeting? And how does that align with the plan and where we see the town going or who we see it serving? You know, and it's everything from the businesses that serve different demographics, how that aligns with the boardwalk, how that aligns with the people that live here, what tourism comes for. So you start really doing more critical thinking into what you want to go after. Like, I know you want help there, I don't really know how to help you. And so even this becomes an onboarding that says, okay, this year, you're new to KCDC, here's what we're working on, here are our priorities. And so even when you're looking at people to a point, what skill sets do you need? And so if you, and it has to be all of us, it can't be, oh, well, you know, we've done this for, everybody's done something before, but if they're not doing it now, they're not doing it.
Right.
Where does this live?
It lives with us here.
No, no, I mean, like, what system, what kind of platform are we on?
Well, this would live on our website. And the webs, the document that's created will live on the website, but as well as a scorecard.
I just wonder if you were going to use a system like a Microsoft project or some sort of tracking system? Because what Ray brings up is one of the things we've all experienced when you came on board, it's like, hey, we've worked on this project a while ago, does anybody know where this information is? You know, do we know who we worked with at that time? We spent months just backtracking on some things like that. And if this is living somewhere, like on a Microsoft project or some sort of platform, I mean, it's always dynamic. Like she said, you know, who's going to know what happened? Well, it's because it doesn't live with Caesar, it lives, you know, on platform, and everybody accesses that dynamically. At any given point, you know, no matter who's here, you can look at it and see what's been done, what the ideas were going forward, where the documents are that support that, where the engineering, the contractors, vendors that we utilize, all that can be there. And I think that's been a challenge, probably the biggest challenge, is picking up where others left off.
Yep, so-
Or something like that.
Slack, Microsoft BI, there's so many systems out there, but I will tell you, this is not a comp plan. A comp plan is going to cost us a couple hundred thousand bucks to do it all the way. However, a comprehensive plan-
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But a strategic plan, or strat plan, I was called for short, the idea is to cast the net and make sure that we're keeping towards that direction. However, there are smaller data points you can keep. For example, our goal is to reduce response times. Well, keep track of your response times, give me an average, then we'll see, keep tracking that. We talked about light density, we talked about traffic counts, or, you know, like traffic mitigation, we talked about street conditions, we talked about usage of parks. We can track with this new software, we'll be able to track how often our parks are being used, what times are they being used, what amount do you get the parks they are using? There's, the point is, is we'll be able to make more educated decisions on what we're doing. For example, we have, you know, folks that want to come up here and make requests on the city side to use hot funds. Well, how do we know the rate of return on those hot funds? So there's a lot of decisions that can be made once we set that framework. But also, Ms. Jacklin mentioned that this is a living document, and indeed it is. The idea is for this to be your framework to kind of move forward. Again, if you so choose. Again, we could keep going at this how we've been doing it before. So.
Okay.
I only have one comment. Thank you all for putting this together. I've been through one, it's a lot of work. It's going to be a lot of work. I've done it on the private side, not so much on the public side, but.
The idea is-
I wish you, I wish you well on your journey.
The idea is to have one voice, and sometimes that gets lost. Sometimes we feel that maybe, again, I'm just hearing the rumblings from the other side, right, that maybe council, KCDC, the staff and the residents, and everybody, and everybody's not on one accord or beating, or finally beating the same drum. This allows us to get closer to that. Will we always be on the same page? Probably not, but this allows us to make an attempt to make everybody's voice heard. And that's one thing that we want to do, to create the proper framework for what we want to see in Kima moving forward.
Sorry, would you run an action, Ramus?
Oh, no, if there's action desire to keep going with the project, the next step for us is to create an RFP based off of this framework, unless there's some changes. So the feedback I would like, if it's possible, before a week or two, at the most, giving your feedback on this document, and if, unless there's an objection, the next thing would be was to bring an RFP back for your review. Once you agree with the RFP, then we release the RFP, then we can go from there, if that's what you so choose to do. But if we're carrying the project, I have to just let us know, because there's a lot of other parts to do, because the RFP alone is going to be probably a good eighteen, twenty page document.
I guess the question would be, would you all like to see this be an agenda item for next meeting?
Yes.
Yes. There you go, you got direction for next meeting.
And honestly, Caesar, I mean, to me, the only downside of this is where it lives.
Absolutely.
Can't be on a piece of paper, someone says, it's got to be dynamic, it's got to be something that everybody can look at, because it just goes back to what she had said, you know, there's, we keep doing same things over again, because no one knew what was done and what wasn't done. It just stays limited.
That's her, and Patty's here in the audience, she knows that I'm going to lean on her for this project. So again, the measurement tools will be something that we collectively want to decide, how are we tracking if we're doing better? You know, it's like, how do we go to school and not know if we're being tested, and what are we tested on? So this is creating that syllabus, if you will, of what we're going to be created on, and then this is where we're going to go to get to those directions. Whatever direction that is.
The timetable is to accomplish this, because you go running to Thanksgiving, Christmas,
Ideally-
Street port like January, I mean, it's-
Ideally, you would say RFP release September, October. You let it sit there and simmer for two to three months, make sure you get a good pool back of responses. You probably award November to December, and then you start kickoff project in January, so you can end it by June, July at the latest. Yeah. That's not a general framework, and I'm just throwing data. Yeah, I mean, it's, a good strat plan is going to take you six to eight months, maybe nine months, depending on how deep the RFP process is.
Bring it back in September as an agenda item, and do a move forward.
Yes, sir, we'll do.
Do you have anything else, Caesar?
I do not, sir.
We'll move on to number eight, consider agenda. Eight A, approval of minutes for the seven, nine, twenty-five KCDC special meeting. Eight B, approval of minutes for the seven, fifteen, twenty-five KCDC regular meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Summoned.
Sir.
Should we get that, Natasha?
Yep.
Calls in favor?
Aye.
So he knows. Number nine, consider impossible action items. Nine A, consider impossible action, appoint to the Kima Community Development Corporation for position five. I put this on here because last time, this is the way it was done, we've done it, how many different ways? I don't know. Since I've been here three years, I think I've seen it done twenty times. So if there was any recommendations from this board or the applicants that were sitting in, I would like to at least have an opportunity to take that back tomorrow night to the council because they're the ones that actually make the appointment. So I know last time it was done, interviews in here, and they had to come one night, they come back the next night, which I think is excessive, but if there's any comments, I just want to make sure if anybody had any ideas. I don't know if you had a time to review, everybody. I think they're in here.
I have a question. While you all, while everybody looks in the back. Did we invite them, these applicants here tonight?
No.
Do they know?
No, we did not invite them for this evening. I think that was excessive.
Which is fine, I'm, I don't-
I just wanted to see if there was any feedback from this board, if they wanted to come in tomorrow night, because we don't have a say in this. I mean, I know we can make a recommendation, I mean, but that's all we're going to do.
They do know to come tomorrow. It's easy, Patty. Just be ashamed for them to be on the agenda, I have no idea.
Our bible, I'll say no, so. We do not have to live in Kima. But I know with the town growing, I would like to see more Kima residents, especially when you have good applicants.
Um, so I guess I'll, I don't know two of these applicants. I know the other two. I will say, I did have a, I did have a conversation with Mr. Vitlock all along a while ago, just kind of about his background, didn't know him, he is a resident of Kima Crosswind. He does have a municipal background, we'll see if his packet, I'm assuming his resume's in there somewhere, but. Seemed like a really nice, seemed like a guy that fit in well for that is currently here. And I think he brings, I think his background brings some expertise that maybe not beat the strong suit of the rest of us. So I recommend to everybody, if you don't know him, haven't met him around town, to reach out to him, just like if you haven't met Mr. Wiggins, or anybody, reach out to him. But unfortunately, I don't know Mr. Reiser or, kidding? But.
Yes, that's Mrs. Kim.
So. But it was, it was a good conversation. I mean, it was, he had some, he had some thoughts about things in town that I don't know that I would have gotten to that on my own, just kind of brainstorming through it from his municipal, kind of floodplain background, what he does for his day job. What he does for his day job.
Anybody else got any thoughts or comments that you want me and Dustin to take back for tomorrow night?
I think that may be people who are actually residents in Kima. Is it a good thing?
It helps.
Um, yeah, I would say, um, just based on what's here, um, Ryan makes enough sense for everything that we have going on.
Does anybody here know Mr. Reiser? I've never, never met him, so I.
Honestly, you know, when we did it, when we did the, just got a little presentation, we were, what we're doing, what you thought it'd be there, I thought it really helped a lot, because you just get a feel for the person, this is a little bit difficult from here, honestly. We can do it different next time, I promise, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how to drag them into two different meetings, and it's a little excessive to. I just. We got our two meetings. I just think it's a little excessive, but. There's no other, there's no action on that item, so nine B, removing Isaac Sedanya and assigner on from the KCDC bank account, do I have a motion?
Summoned.
Do I have a second?
Say.
Did you get that, Natasha?
Yes.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nine C, considering possible action to approve design fee for bidding a construction document of phase seven of the fifty-seven acre nature facility up to twenty-six thousand dollars.
Uh, yes, before we do that, did we receive enough traction on nine A?
I think it was just, I, I heard everybody.
Okay, my question is, is, as far as we're concerned, I guess we'll, we'll make sure that we have enough traction to bring to council tomorrow. Thank you.
We can make them, we can make a motion for that, to provide the recommendation for I think we're all kind of on the same page there. Provide the recommendation for, I think it was Ryan. Was it? Uh, Ryan Vitlak, um, as our recommendation to city council.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Tom. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we have unanimous. Back to nine C, considering possible action to approve design fee for bidding construction documentation of phase seven of the fifty-seven acre nature facility up to twenty-six thousand dollars.
Yes, thank you, sir, um, thank you to everybody who was able to make it to the ribbon cutting for phases one and two. Uh, as we know, the phases were meant to be in order one through nine. Uh, unfortunately, one of the things that we realized is that although the park is ADA, the playground's ADA, the access to get to the park is not necessarily ADA. Uh, so we would need to have access to get to the park being ADA, so that's where phase seven comes in. Uh, which would be that, uh, again, none of us were all together, uh, to come together and decide what order these phases would go in, so we're leapfrogging phases three, four, uh, and five, and in this case, six. We did put pages, phases three, four, five, and seven into, uh, one of the grants, I was mentioning earlier this afternoon. Um, so there is a possibility that these will be grant funded, however, to get the ball rolling and to get this thing more shovel ready, we're, uh, requesting to get the design done for the twenty-six thousand dollars that is showed there under change order amount. Uh, phase one zero three, for the twenty-six thousand to get this, um, this engineering done that needs to occur in order for us to move this project forward. We are working with, uh, the Meritage Group, uh, to get the sidewalk extended as far as possible, they've given us a budget they're willing to adhere to. Having this design done gets that done a little bit faster, so we'll be able to pick up where they leave off. So we're hereby requesting to get this.
This is, if we wait till January for the Texas Parks of Wildlife, and hadn't started from scratch, we would be hopefully even getting really started in September. With this, if we were awarded, we, even though it's not reimbursable, we could get the ball rolling a lot faster in January to get this part of the project up and going, because I know it's something that actually needed the ramp and the walkway, it'd be a very nice feature for all the residents in Kima Oaks and Kima Crossing. So just didn't want to drop the ball between now and January while we're waiting on them.
We also wanted to take advantage of the, of the Kima Crossing's commitment, uh, before time runs out, to make sure we, we have their commitment in place as well.
Do you have any questions?
Calling for a motion.
Do I have a motion?
Uh, I move to approve the design fees for bidding a construction documentation of phase seven of the fifty-seven acre nature facility up to twenty-six thousand dollars.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous. Nine D, considering a possible approval of a, of twenty-twenty-six KCDC budget. Tom, do I got questions? Mainly at the linear park, you and I had discussed about five hundred thousand foot into that, because we expect in a couple of weeks to get the feedback. Have we declared that a project from the KCDC? I know we've talked about it, and I know it's been in discussions, but I don't ever remember, do you remember, I don't remember it ever being declared properly as a project yet, that I recall.
Uh, it was something else, we're talking about the area underneath the bridge, right?
Well, it's, it's all of what TechSta is doing, and how, and what we want, may or may not, may or may not want to do to augment what they're doing.
Yes, it's been, yes, but not with that, not calling it the linear park, they called it something else, but it has been, it's been named as a, as a project. If you go back, there is a, there was a, uh, the last time we put up for projects, we did a big old list of a bunch of them. And, um, I think this was when Greg and Greg was here. There's a big list of a bunch of them, and, um, there's something to that regard on it.
That's my understanding as well, I wasn't sure what the name was, although we just called it Linear Park, or Gateway Park, or whatever. I think we probably need to go through the process correctly. Because you just brought up a name that I would question if it was done correctly, so. To make sure we're following all the protocols.
Sure. So, uh, and again, excuse me for not, I, I, I thought it was already a properly declared project, so I apologize, because, uh, this, this group.
I don't recall, maybe it has been.
Again, no, it's, it's, it's fine.
Greg and Greg was more excessive with the steps than not, than not doing the steps, when it came to declaring projects. It was, they were a little.
So we had something declared.
There was something declared, and it definitely included that area entering it into a park-like structure.
Well, we'll, we'll look that up and we'll bring it back. Um, I don't know that we have access to do that right now, I'm sure Natasha's previously trying to check, but, um.
Yeah, I don't have access to the KCA right now.
Okay, um, but what we can do, um, in this case, and I guess concerning, is that we've already agreed to start designing that, that space, and there's been dollars allocated towards the design, so I fear that if it was not properly done, this board has already approved some dollars to go get the design, and we're getting close to the end, I think last I saw, we're at about eighty percent. So, so they'll be coming to you soon to make a presentation of their findings.
Yeah, according to Brett, we should see something within a week or two. So at that point, we know, we, we, we know what we, or we'll have an idea of what we might want to augment. So we just definitely wanted to be able to act on that in this year. Yeah, well, just want to make sure we're doing everything by the book, because it's worth that. I don't remember being, since I've been on KCDC, but.
It might be, it might be referred to in some context as a master park.
That might be.
Do you feel like it, something's in there, I could be wrong, I know the park that the city's doing in front of Tiju, Tom, it's not there.
It is not there, you're right.
But, but the gateway for our linear park, or gateway, whatever.
Now that you say that Parks Master Plan, I did see some stuff in the Parks Master Plan tied to it.
Referred in there, I don't know how.
It's referred to it. It is referred to it.
Be cleared as a project, the city recognizes it, I just want to make sure we've gone through the right steps.
And there's, there is, uh, Natasha. Linear Greenway, page seventy-six. On cue. Do you maybe go to page seventy-six, because I'm pretty sure this is where it has the wooden picnic tables, maybe, I remember seeing.
Yeah, like, something I saw a long time ago.
There were like bollards, like the circular bollards that would be at the intersections.
Or something at one point.
It might have been called like the boat ramp park or something.
I think that was it, right? That's it, Linear Greenway. There you go, sir.
I was talking about the city, which I'm sure KCDC did, I just just want to make sure we follow the right protocols. Is this something, once we get a number, we can do a budget adjustment, or does it have to be in the budget?
No, you could certainly do a budget adjustment, you have the money, the dollars there, so.
This till twenty-eight, because that's what I'm saying, the boat ramp, so. Well, I mean, I hate to put a big number in there.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm not avoiding the park.
Some of this is all in TechSta to accomplish, we just need to get them to finish line.
They're saying the boat ramp's twenty-eight, I think, so, I mean, I would think.
Well, I know that got pushed, but I mean, they had dollars, they were, some of the stuff on the bridge needs to get done, it's all in TechSta to get done. It's not all of the city.
Right. Yeah, we'll have a better fix on that, once we have the, the meeting with LGA, like I said, that. I think I'd be more comfortable doing a budget adjustment, once we know what that number is, and just throwing a number against the wall. Unless, unless. If it's already declared a project and we're good to go, then I don't have a problem with doing a budget adjustment, but I, I just don't have no faith in TechSta having it done the next. You know we're going to spend that this year, yeah. Well, I just, with the track record I've had with them, I just, I mean, I, once we get to that point, I don't have a problem doing a budget adjustment and moving forward, me personally, but I mean, be up to the board, but, but that's up to y'all, I mean, I don't have a problem putting it in now either.
I mean, I think we come back with a better idea, once we, I think, once Tom has his LGA conversation, we'll know a little more what we're looking at. Because they're supposed to also go out and get an opinion from TechSta, what they're going to cover.
Correct.
You know, I don't, I think we go down that rabbit hole, and we have a rabbit hole to go through.
I definitely don't want to get TechSta a number, just blanketly, that they know we have, send them aside, I also know that about TechSta as well. So I think I'd rather just leave the ball in their court, and then we can make a budget adjustment, when the time is right to do that. I agree, I mean, there's a good, good chance for maybe an opportunity to augment that this year, it may not happen until next year, so I think you're a hundred percent correct.
Yeah, I think chances of us winning it this year are slim.
And your other question, you said, yeah, too. Oh, on the, the streetscape, that, you know, we, one of the things that we had done was develop some plans, we wanted to take those out, in our business outreach, show that to some of the uh, business owners out, that would be affected by it, get their feedback, and possibly modify those plans, so. That is a project, if we just, same thing, we don't know exactly what we want to do at this point, because we need the feedback from our business owners, and as long as we can make a budget adjustment later on, fine. I think we don't know when the litigation's going to be completed, and city councils we're stuck in the mud until that's completed, so.
Next update will be the end of September. We, we, we should get the next update the end of September.
End of September. So. Those were only two points. And was that total project one point five, or was it two million? It was one point five, this was last year.
And I believe that you budgeted right there, streetscape.
I think if we want to readdress that, take it back to council, I think that would be the do a budget adjustment, if that's the direction this board wants to go, and we can proceed forward. Sounds good. Dustin, you had some questions or concerns during the workshop about contract labor and.
I think we addressed that.
Okay.
Uh, I mean, I understood the contract labor, I just.
Just want to make sure.
I, if we're going to make budget adjustments later on in the year, going to look at them, I mean, I just, I don't know how much I like having zero dollars, it's going to be tough sledding to get done, I think, but.
Well, if we don't get a word of the grant, I mean, the fifty-seven acre park, I don't anticipate spending that, that's in, in lieu if we get the seven hundred and fifty match. I wouldn't suggest us spending seven seventy-five if we don't get the grant.
Correct.
Just go back to our five hundred thousand like we've been doing, so that'd be another two hundred and fifty thousand freed. But that's what we need for the matching grant that we've applied for in August.
Yeah, I mean, we agree that here, I'm good with that.
So. That would be my suggestion, if we're not awarded. We go back to the five hundred thousand and proceed forward with phase seven, and probably phase.
Three. Three was the next one.
Yeah, that's exactly, I think seven's just because the connectivity.
Correct.
And then just start going in line, phase three, maybe a non-phase's total, so. You may want to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-six KCDC budget.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Got that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Item ten, executive session, ten A, we will go in executive session at six forty-two.
Promises will take longer to walk there and back than to discuss.
It will take longer. Just hang it back to our justices.
Doing okay?
That's most.
Yeah, took it in there. We, we only bought it in person, because we had a lot of separation in mind, and he did pretty well there. I think he operated it, like, or he had, you know, other ice cream. They upgraded some guidelines, uh, or we had other high school groups again. And they had to, they had to, we didn't know what to call them, so we didn't get them to care. It was the NBA, it was a huge, really. Now, does it happen? It's, um, it's a, um, factor in the city, but they don't build these cages. They have these, you know, cage law.